Okay, we'll open this council hearing. Today is April 20th, 2021. The time is 6:00 PM. The City Council Open Hearing is being held to consider the dismissal or discipline of Counselor Topaz based on the recent investigation. This will be conducted as an open hearing as requested by Counselor Topaz. It is an open hearing where the public is able to participate, not an adversary hearing. On Friday, April 16th, Counselor Topaz, as an attorney, requested that the hearing be rescheduled. The request was denied by the city, by the council, set the meeting date and time of April 7th. In addition, there is no requirement that the city grant a postponement under the Attorney General's Public Records and Meetings Manual, which provides guidance. The hearing is not being held to continue hearing the findings of the investigation, instead to allow the council to consider whether to impose discipline. The hearing will be conducted as follows. Attorney Pete Hicks will present the background of the investigation. The council has held three executive sessions to review the results of this investigation and exempt records, public records. Counselor Topaz has had an opportunity to attend each of the executive sessions to hear the report. He attended two of the three executive sessions. After the presentation, Counselor Topaz and his representative will be given time to speak. Citizens will then be given an opportunity to provide comment in accordance with council rules and procedures. That means each speaker will have up to five minutes to provide comments. Council will then discuss whether it wishes to consider discipline based on the results of the investigation of the hearing input. Council may ask staff and attorneys for its options. At the conclusion of this hearing, the council has the option to give direction to the next step if it determines that discipline is merited. The council may direct the staff and city attorneys to develop and return a potential action at a future council meeting. Okay, so now we will turn it over to, I'm going to have Peter Hicks give us a review on where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we thought it'd be helpful to give some background as to how the investigation started, the process the investigation went through, and what we'll talk about today is what the allegations that were investigated and those findings with respect to those allegations. We're not releasing the report. We determined that that's not something we would do based upon attorney-client privilege. And as you noted, Mr. Mayor, the contents of the report have been discussed in full with Mr. Topaz on two separate occasions, and the opportunity he had to review the report was in a meeting that he did not attend. So, for background, this investigation started in September, on September 16th of 2020, when the council authorized the investigation following a public comment that was made on September 2nd that raised concerns related to potential harassment, discrimination, and some concerns that Counselor Topaz was using his office for personal gain. Based upon those allegations, the council authorized an investigation, and as the city's attorney, we retained Jill Goldsmith, who is an attorney herself and works with Workplace Solutions. Jill conducted an extensive investigation, beginning in November. In November, she attempted her first contact with Counselor Topaz. As part of the investigation, it's always customary practice to give the person who's the subject of the investigation an opportunity to participate, to, one, fill them in on the nature of the allegations and the content of the allegations, and, two, to obviously allow them to respond. Ms. Goldsmith reached out, our office reached out, to Counselor Topaz on eight separate occasions. Counselor Topaz initially declined to participate in the investigation until he said his attorney would be available in January, some two months after the investigation started. In January, we again attempted to reach out, Jill Goldsmith did, after Counselor Topaz said his attorney would be available, and Counselor Topaz failed to respond. Given Counselor Topaz's failure to respond over eight different occasions, Jill Goldsmith determined he didn't want to participate and move forward the investigation and put her findings and conclusions together. During the course of the investigation, Ms. Goldsmith interviewed 15 different witnesses and reviewed numerous documents, including council record and records of council meetings, in order to try to substantiate or not substantiate the allegations. Ms. Goldsmith looked at essentially five separate allegations during the investigation. What I'll do is go through each of those allegations, and I'll let you know kind of Ms. Goldsmith's response and conclusions with respect to those allegations. Again, we're not going to go into detail with respect to each allegations. That's been shared with the council on a couple of different occasions, and we want to be careful to make sure we preserve the confidentiality of the complainants and also the witnesses, because there were concerns referenced by people that there was retaliation that occurred or that would occur. So, we're trying to be protective of those folks during this whole process. All right. So, the allegations, in summary, were five. The first allegation was that Counselor Topaz had attempted to use his position as a city councillor to cause the city to perform work on his personal residence because of a flooding problem the building had historically had, and that he had maintained a grudge against a particular city employee due to her role in a 2009 stormwater and sewer project. Based upon the investigation findings, the investigator found that Counselor Topaz had attempted to use his position as a city councillor to cause the city to perform work on the personal residence, and had attempted to harm the employee and her employment in retaliation for her role in representing the city when Counselor Topaz sued the city in 2012. Significantly, the investigator noted that Counselor Topaz had attempted to put his personal residence on a list of city projects during a budget meeting in April of 2019. That interaction was recorded in the council minutes related to that April 2019 meeting. With respect to the second allegation, the allegation was that Counselor Topaz had bullied staff, spread false statements about them, and that he behaved in a discriminatory manner. The investigator concluded that Counselor Topaz has in fact behaved in an inappropriate, unprofessional, and sometimes bullying manner toward staff. Those were often identified or verified by comments during public meetings that were based upon her review. Again, Counselor Topaz declined to participate in the investigation, so he did not offer his view or his version of what happened. Third allegation was that employees had stated that Counselor Topaz had used his position as a city councillor to attempt to harm an employee in her employment, trying to have her fired, attempting to block her legitimate attempts to be promoted, and otherwise use his position in an inappropriate manner due to his personal and discriminatory bias. That allegation was also sustained or substantiated, and the investigator found that Counselor Topaz had in fact attempted to block the female employee's application for employment, although his attempts, or application for promotion, although his attempts had been unsuccessful because the city had blocked those attempts, or the council had, and that he behaved in a manner that was both betraying a personal and a gender bias toward the employee. The fourth allegation was that Counselor Topaz had made inoffensive statements reflecting poorly on the city and in violation of city policies, diversity resolution, and ethics code, and that he had used his elected position to bully or harass staff. That allegation was also substantiated, and the investigator found that Counselor Topaz had used a number of inappropriate terms, including referring to disabled individuals as cripples, referring to Asian, Asian-Americans as chinamen, making offensive statements reflecting poorly on the city and in violation of the city's policies, and had referred to Latinos in a derogatory manner, and had also repeatedly used the N-word when referring to a local canyon in an area that was previously known under a prior name around the turn of the century. The fifth allegation was that Counselor Topaz had used his platform as a city councillor to make defamatory, insulting, or untrue statements about city staff publicly, directly, and in local media. The investigator sustained or substantiated that allegation as well, indicating that Counselor Topaz had made untrue comments about the city staff and local media, or written articles or letters, including making an unfounded allegation in the Spotlight newspaper in June of 20, or June 28th of 2019, and including claiming that he had been silenced when records and meetings from council minutes had indicated that he had not been silenced and had had an opportunity to contribute on a number of occasions. That is the sum total of the investigation, and those are the conclusions that were offered. Again, Counselor Topaz had multiple opportunities to offer his response to those allegations, including the eight different attempts or contact by the investigator, the March 17th, 2021 council meeting executive session, when the report was shared with Counselor Topaz. During the March 17th session, the council elected to have an in-person meeting on March 31st, where the entire investigation would be provided to Counselor Topaz and the other counselors. Counselor Topaz elected not to attend that meeting. And again, the investigation was discussed on April 7th, 2021, during a council meeting executive session. When Counselor Topaz was asked to comment, he indicated that he would wait for his attorney to respond, and didn't offer any additional comment. That's where we are at this point.
Okay. Topaz, your representative, do you have time to speak?
Meetings that I couldn't attend was nice being in the hospital, but I'm glad you put forth what I didn't attend. There's a whole lot of things that were said, maybe, yes. The N-word that you brought up was spoken, believe it or not, in front of a city council. It was also spoken in front of Sue Nelson. And the city council, as you did, raised the problem that Mr. Topaz was kind of negative. This was recorded, it was recorded in a courtroom, it was recorded over 10 years ago. And the judge at the time replied that Mr. Topaz replied correctly in a legal manner, historically and legally. So, bringing this up, that legal response is inappropriate is very good, like that. The, I can't remember ever asking for anybody to do anything on my property. I have asked for the stormwater problem in our neighborhood to be fixed. The Clear Water Act says you're supposed to have sanitary sewer sealed, and when you do that, you supply an alternate way for stormwater. The city indeed sealed the sanitary sewer. Unfortunately, they did not put any pipes in for the stormwater. And in the city's engineering inspection before, that area was 45 times the amount of water comes into that area when it rains. And it was noted when the sewer system was put in in 1913 that there was always a wet area that needed to be drained. So, when the sewer was upgraded, it's known as INI, the city stopped collecting the stormwater that was supposed to be collected both by the Clear Water Act, which is the federal act, and the city's determination when they put the sewer in in 1913. Now, there's another thing the city did, which was negligible at the time, and I'm glad you didn't mention it, because the city at that time was dumping sewer into the Columbia River, and this is 1960-ish. And the EPA says you can't do that. So, this is when the sewer plant was built. Similar problem was with the mills, so we built a cooling pond, a lagoon. And what had to happen to get the sewage from my area to the other area was you had to have a pump station and run sewage down Fourth Street, going south rather than into the park. And to do that, they used a 30-inch concrete line, which was very good, because what that did was raise the street so the street level is now above the sidewalk. So, the city now is dumping water, not only on my property, very little on my property, but the rest of my neighbors, both on Third and Fourth Street. At the same time, the city closed off the storm drains. So, now the water that starts coming down St. Helen's Street, going from the top of St. Helen's Streets between Second and Third Street, comes down, cuts across Third Street, goes across the sidewalk, and floods the backyards. In fact, John Walsh was with me one day, and we were having an inspection, and there's four inches of water flowing into one of my neighbor's basements, and John was there to see that. So, requesting that problem be taken care of as an undue request for the city to take care of my property is liffy. Now, when we had this trial over 10 years ago, the state geologist or ex-geologist, who's in private practice, mentioned that we're draining five blocks of water into my back area, which is not being collected by a sewer system or a drain system now. But at the same time, the city, on the top of Nob Hill, which only has a one-block area, will put in two lines, one sewer line, which had to be fixed because it was leaking a little bit, and they hammer-drilled a drain line. So, if you're on top of Nob Hill in a friend of the city, you get storm drainage and sewer drainage. If you're at the bottom of the hill, they drains five areas, no problem. But one of the more interesting things about this line, and this was reported to the state licensing board, was part of the line, water has to flow uphill from one catch basin to another to get out. And another one of those little, it's okay because the water flows uphill in St. Helen's, was that some of the storm drains were put on Third Street. There are four drains, none of them at the low spot, but one drain you can identify when it rains because it's one inch above the water level, and the water level that's going out goes into the sewer system, which is supposed to protect. So, talking about having an engineering department that designs things well is not really good. In fact, they are defaulting in understanding gravity. Now, bringing this engineering problem or deficit to the licensing board, the licensing board said that we have no authority to do anything about it. But, they said, Mr. Topaz said he's a professional engineer, and he's not, and so they were going to fine me. Good. So, we went to, my attorney and I went to the administrative court, and the administrative court said Mr. Topaz did nothing wrong. They had the five things that I did, which were absolutely correct. And as a courtesy, they pointed out, you tell people that you're a professional engineer, which I am, but licensed in another state. Well, we go along, and the next court, the Court of Appeals, says Mr. Topaz violated Oregon law because he's telling publicly that there's a problem, and that's against the rules. We lost that case. We took it to the Oregon Supreme Court. We pointed out the same problem, and the Supreme Court said, Mr. Topaz is not allowed to talk about this problem, and the fact that it's hurting five other properties is still, he cannot talk about it. So, as I'm talking about these things, the Supreme Court, the appeals court in the state of Oregon says it's illegal to talk about problems, which is good. Recently, within the last, I guess, year and a half, there was a similar complaint by an engineer because the state's licensing board said he was making public statements and interfering with the government, and he shouldn't be doing that. So, he took it to the federal court, and the federal court says, ah, we'll shake hands, everything's okay. The federal court says you can't do that because of Topaz. Mr. Topaz's First Amendment rights were violated, as you're violating this. And there were some other things that the state did. So, we're spending a lot of money here. By the way, how much money have you collected from the city on all this investigation? Can you tell me? Hundred thousand, hundred fifty thousand?
Couldn't tell you, sit here today.
Oh, so you don't, but the longer you go, the more you get. Good show. Okay.
The reason we're going longer is because we've been waiting for you to respond.
You don't give a man a board, nails, rope, build his own hanging things. You have not told me what I've done wrong. If you're telling me what I did 11 years ago, and you made a big deal about that. Now, the other thing which I find a little bit upsetting, you talk about me badmouthing the Chinese. Unfortunately, I worked with a number of Chinese at a couple of universities. So, I find that somewhat slanderous. I also work internationally with the Chinese, and I have been told by the federal government about what, how the Chinese are following me in some of the scientific work I do. So, your quick thing about, now, I use the word cripples or cribs. How many of you have worked with crippled people, or people who handicap? How many of you have built equipment for them and built things that keep them alive and studied them? I have a working relationship with them. Not a political relationship, but a working relationship. But you're taking my work connection away from me by saying it's terrible. Good. So, what are we talking about? I'm an engineer, I make decisions based on good engineering. If people are inadequate, I will say so. If that keeps them from getting a job, that's my job. Now, we have another problem. And this is where one of the citizens came to me and said, we've got a problem with the water reservoir, the way it's being fixed. So, I went up to look at it, and I wasn't allowed to look at it. And I was told that the project manager, Tim, the inspector, wouldn't let me see it. I didn't know that Tim was qualified. One of the things I also found out was that the fluid leaks into the reservoir as well as leaks out. So, Mr. Topaz is bringing up the point that we have an unhealthy problem, and it, there should have been someone on that project 24/7 because of the public health and the fact they're not doing it. Mr. Topaz said that person isn't qualified. And the fact I've been in the hospital business and having a possible infection going to a whole community is what my job is. In fact, that's, if you take a look at the oath that a professional engineer takes, even if his own job is in jeopardy, he is to protect the public health, and that is not being done by our engineering department. Okay? Now, there's another problem which we brought up. When they were cleaning out this, you mean that half-gallon reservoir, they ground a whole bunch of stuff and flushed it down the stream. Well, we talked to the EPA about that. And the EPA says, oh, you can't dump that much water into a stream without a permit. You can't dump chlorinated water into the stream. You just can't. So, we've got some major engineering problems going, and people who do that shouldn't be hired, should not be even working here, and now me doing a job is considered bad, 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 because we're bothering the good friends of the city staff. Good. I'm going to tell you something that happened to me many years ago, which has kind of framed my life. One of the things that I was involved in, this would be 1972, was building the fetal monitor, this thing you stick on mama's belly to watch the fetal heart and the contractions to know whether the child is doing okay while it's being born. And one particular day, we had a doozy. We monitored the child 30 seconds, and we were off to do a C-section. It was, the child had a triple wrap, it was a Hollywood-style wrist. And at the end of the day, we're sitting there, and it's one of those days where you're holding a coffee cup with both hands, because that's how much energy we used up. And I mentioned to the people, you know, they never said thank you. And Dr. Paupera said, you know, Steve, our job is saving lives, not getting thanks. The fact that people are getting picked off at me is not my problem. My job is getting the job done. It's keeping costs down in the city, it's keeping people healthy. If that means getting rid of people, that's what I do. If you take what I say in the wrong way and get upset, that's your problem, not mine. I'm not politically correct. Now, I've asked a couple of questions, which I've never gotten answers to. I asked our finance director how much money we had spent for the chemicals needed to knock down chlorine when we dumped the water into the stream. And he referred me to another person, okay? Yeah, he's the one, if you take a look at the reports, the, every council meeting, this is the money we spent, these things are detailed, ad nauseum. There's never been information on that. So, I went and found out. I found out a year later. But the next meeting after I asked the question, the director of finance has this six-page document that he's reading, how much this question bothered him. He told me to go to him, email him, or talk to him somehow privately, and he would give me the answer, and it was bothering him so much and his family, and he couldn't sleep and all that. Couldn't care less, people, but I didn't get the answer. Now, as I say, we're dumping a few million gallons a couple of times down the stream, that's illegal according to the EPA. I'm trying to keep the city out of that problem, but I'm getting yelled at because I kept somebody from sleeping. Now, the, it was also mentioned that I knew the answer, why did I ask him? Well, I knew the answer a year, basically a year and a half after I asked him. And the way I got the answer was I called up people who make the equipment and said, how much does it cost and what do you do? So, I know how much it costs to do it. I do not know whether the city spent that money. And according to what I've seen in the bills, the equipment and the type of chemicals would never use. So, the city is illegally dumping water. Now, another engineering detail, the city's engineers drilled the core out of the concrete. And they mentioned that the seal, the coating that the contractor's putting on it, didn't stick. And I looked at it, and it parted company correct, but it parted company by taking the concrete with it. So, the inspector wasn't there, or the city engineer wasn't there, when the surface was repaired, because the surface was not prepared correctly. And now, I'm being told that I'm blocking this person's employment. Yes, I am. That person should be fired, because we've got a whole lot of money tied up, we've got a whole lot of help tied up in that tank. We also have the problem that it looks like the water coming out of that tank, if you go downhill, a number of the homes in that area downhill from that have got water problems, where they have to put sumps in. Okay? Now, back to design, I always liked this one. And the city's done this before, and this is, again, one of those things that shouldn't have, when they put the drain line in, the city finally tried to get a storm drain line into my area, and they started off with a storm drain on Gumway, and the idea is to dig a ditch up to my place. Basically, a block, well, in one way, half a block, after four feet of digging, they hit basalt. After four feet of digging, they hit basalt. So the city engineer did not tell the contractor that he was going to have to chop rock. The thing that's important to know about this, remember I mentioned about that big 30-inch concrete pipe that took the sewer from our area down to the sewer plant? Good. Because that's eight feet away from this, and they had to chop rock, and the city engineer did not feel it was necessary to indicate that there was rock there. That's a huge cost. Now, I, I also enjoy, I can't ever remember anybody saying, "Take care of my property." Really can't. But I have paperwork that shows our engineer telling a contractor to take care of a particular person because they're a politician, politically important person. That, oh, I got that, by the way. When we had the court case, you asked for information, and the city dumped a whole lot of stuff on us, as lawyers do. And here's this letter from our city engineer telling contractors to take special care of certain people because they're politically connected. Good show. Now, if you think that makes me upset, it does. When I ask how much money we've been paid, and this is one of the things I've come back at, and a number of people have asked me to redo it, and I've been told by the mayor, "We've already answered that. We're not going to tell you why you keep asking again." Okay? One of the questions is, how much money have we gotten from rent from the marijuana grow facility? The contract that originally started out as a rent-to-buy, so we, the company that is doing this pays the city nothing for 10 months. No money down? Nothing for 10 months. After 10 months, they pay $10,000 a month for a particular time, then $15,000 a month for a particular time, then $20,000, and now it's $30,000. And right now, if you run the numbers up, the city should have been paid $720,000, which, according to them, it hasn't. According to the state, on a credit card, they bought their license on a private credit card. I've been told that permits and licenses have been paid, but I have not been told or found out how much has been paid for the rent. Now, if you look at the contract, you find out something else, which is bad business. When we have, the city has somebody build sidewalks or something, there's a whole pile of boilerplates, this is the insurance you've got to have, and that goes ad nauseam, page on page, and pretty much every contract says the same thing. This company that's using our property to grow marijuana does not have any insurance. There's no liability insurance, no workers' compensation insurance. Anything happens on that facility, the city pays for it. They don't want to talk about that. I've asked a number of times and got no answer. Now, the other thing that, I'm going back to my first day as a councilman, you get sworn in, and you say, "I swear to follow the Constitution of the United States, the laws of Oregon," and so on. Constitution, the federal law says you don't have marijuana. It's illegal to grow, and yet the city allows that. The state of Oregon says you don't grow marijuana on city property. The city is doing that. If you want to say, "I'm bothering people by bringing that up," go for it, because I am. I'm going to go back again, reminisce about way back when. I'm going to go back to those delivery ward rooms. Do you know what a child looks like from a drug addict? Do you know what the drug addict looks like? If you think any way I'm going to accept building the material that does that, you really are bad news. Now, one of the other things I did, which is probably even more outstanding than watching young women and newborn babies as drug addicts, is an overdose baby, nine months old, Cleveland Clinic, 1962. I spent two and a half hours giving that child CPR. I had a high-speed blood pressure, EEG, EKG on that child. I had an anesthesiologist passing gas. I had the head of pediatrics, the head of artificial organs, the head of the kidney dialysis unit, the head nurse, and the head technician. And the question comes up, and it starts with the head of pediatrics. "I think it's time to end this. The child will have to pronounce dead." It then went to Willem Kolf, the head of artificial organs. He said, "Yes." Went to Sat Nakamoto, the head of Cleveland Clinic's dialysis program. He said, "Yes, enough is enough." The nurse said, "Yes." The tech said, "Yes." Anesthesiologist said, "Yes." And it came up to my turn. I could have said no and kept crying on that child. I know what people look like with drugs, and we're supplying that stuff. And when every time I ask, "How much money have we gotten?", the city gives me a runaround and keeps on doing it. Now, I'm into money. I mean, you guys are making a lot of money on the city with your legal fees about, hey, let's have an audit of tourism. That's been asked of me as a councilman, and I've relayed that request from the city. And I've gotten some really great runarounds, but I have never gotten an okay for an audit. And one of the things that happens in this city is we have our facilities guys from over, come over here and help put up trees or take stickers off or do stuff, and they're not reimbursed for it. It's only a small amount. When I was having to contract people, if I had to bring an outside person in, they'd charge me from the time they left their door to the time they got here, they did the job and went away. So if the city was to be compensated for people to come over here and remove stickers, the time clock starts when they leave the building over on Deer Valley Road, or Deer Island Road, and come here. The hours, and I would be charged, not their salary, but what it cost them. So that means their salary, their benefits, and a little bit of profit. Basically, I would be paying three times the amount of their salary. The city does not get that money from tourism. That's what goes out. And when we asked about that, it's pushed off. I can imagine I'm bothering people by wanting that done. So when you talk about 15 people or whatever, easily. You talk about people that shouldn't be working here, easily. It's not a crime, people, to say that people are not doing their job. It may be upsetting, but you feel that it's terrible to do that, and Mr. Topaz doing his job should be removed from his position. I've been told, and I've stood pretty closely to it, that I don't talk until my attorney's present. We asked for a change in time, not a change in date. They actually wanted this meeting to start earlier, and you refused to do that. You didn't even supply the courtesy, and you have not given us a list of all the things that I'm supposed to do. And I assume until somebody puts their name on a complaint, it's just hearsay, which means nothing has been said about me other than hearsay. You can hide behind your client privilege, but until they put their name on it, written down, it's nothing. The other problem that I see is some of the inferences, John Walsh has been told about this, this, and this, and wait. Well, I talked to John relatively regularly for a long time. Never mentioned that. He must have a file in his desk of these complaints with signature on it. I would like to see that file. That's all I've got to say.
You, you had an opportunity to see that.
No. My attorney wasn't here.
It has been discussed. Would your counsel like to speak?
Yeah, I would just kind of like to reiterate kind of what Mr. Topaz has been saying. You know, we, this whole thing is over this investigative report.
Could you identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, sorry. My name is Attorney Aaron Truckosit from Lower Columbia Law Group.
Sorry, could you spell that for us?
Truckosit, yeah, sorry. So, yeah, this is all over this investigative report. You say that Mr. Topaz has had an opportunity to witness it. His attorneys definitely have not. We have requested it. You've mentioned some issues about possible retaliation. I still think there's a way that maybe this could be redacted, and we could get some sort of paper trail or some sort of, see what Mr. Topaz is accused to be doing on paper and kind of get some more information on that, which we've not been provided. You know, it is a policy in Oregon government for, you know, open and trying to get informed public, and it, just with this report that only the council members have had, which are acting as jury and executioner on this, it just doesn't seem like that is, you know, a due process thing for Mr. Topaz. And we, again, request for that report to be made available. If actions need to be made for some reason, that's, you know, definitely something we can talk about, but we'd like to see that report.
You know the history.
So, and, pardon me, butcher your name. Mr. Truckosit?
Pretty good.
So, forgive me, because you may not be aware of kind of the full background with this. Counselor Topaz in November indicated that he had a lawyer that would be available in January. We've never seen a lawyer. Counselor Topaz indicated at two of the different city council meetings that his lawyer was going to be available or participate in any point at any time. At the last city council meeting that Counselor Topaz attended, we asked him for the name of his lawyer repeatedly, and coincidentally, the name of the lawyer was also Peter, or Pete. Counselor Topaz refused to give us a last name. Your firm appeared, I think, maybe seven days ago, somewhere in there. So the city has waited for Counselor Topaz to give his version of events, to have the opportunity to respond to these allegations, and to meet with the investigator. They've waited since November. He still hasn't answered any of the allegations. He still hasn't offered any response to the actual allegations that were shared with him verbally at one meeting and again at a second meeting. He still didn't attend the meeting where the entire report was produced for all of city council.
And him and his attorney.
The day of the meeting, he indicated that he had surgery. When the meeting was scheduled, which was on March 31st.
He was present.
Actually, I'm sorry, March 17th, he was present. He didn't indicate he had surgery on the 31st. And he attended the meeting on April 7th, shortly thereafter. So it was a pretty good recovery from the surgery. I don't mean to disparage Mr. Topaz. Maybe he had surgery, maybe he didn't. But he certainly didn't tell the city about that. He has had ample opportunity to have the report discussed with him, both by the investigator, both by the council, and both by us. He still hasn't answered any of them. The investigation is concluded. That's where we are. The city is determined that it's going to be able to take action at this point, and that's where we are now. For Counselor Topaz to say he's not aware of the allegations is completely disingenuous. This has been briefed and discussed with him repeatedly. I noticed in his discussion tonight, he still didn't address any of the allegations. So I, I understand what you're saying. We can potentially discuss, but it's up to council as to whether they waive attorney-client privilege or not? The report at this point is privileged, and it's the council's decision as to whether they waive that and decide to disseminate it.
I understand. I, I mean, I hear all that. I still don't believe that Mr. Topaz has seen anything in writing, though. It's all been verbal and...
He skipped the meeting when he could have seen it in writing.
Was it not available to be sent to him or some other thing?
The council had concerns that Counselor Topaz would disseminate the report publicly. It's attorney-client privilege, so we elected to do it where it would be shown to him at a meeting that he initially said he could attend, and then he elected not to.
That's when I was in the hospital. I got three holes to poop.
I, I mean, I think it comes back to him being in the hospital, and, you know, we, you know, I understand referring to really new to this case, and so we're trying to...
And, and don't get me wrong, I don't mean to disparage anything that you're doing. I know that you guys are new to this case. You don't understand the background. I'm trying to let you know what it is. I think the thing that's also interesting is, the report is one thing. The other forum where Counselor Topaz could have at any time participated was in the investigation and the process of the investigation, which took four months because Counselor Topaz wouldn't participate, and the city wanted to give him the opportunity to do so. He declined to do so.
Okay. I mean, yeah, I don't believe he has any duty to do that, though.
No, he doesn't. But for him to now complain about how the investigation went, when he elected not to participate, is, again, disingenuous at best.
Well, I don't think he's complaining about how it went. I just think he's complaining about not ever being able to see it.
Which, again, he's been afforded ample opportunity to see it. So we're going to probably disagree on that point until the cows come home. But I think the record's pretty clear that he had at least three different opportunities where the allegations were clearly discussed with him and where he had a chance to review the entire report, and the other counselors all reviewed it, all asked questions, and it was discussed.
Okay. I mean, yeah, I mean, I think we stand with our part that we, you know, haven't seen it, you know? We've reached out several times since we've taken over, and we have not seen any report.
So let me clarify one thing about your reaching out several times. I invited your co-counsel to contact me at least two separate times by telephone, and I said I would be happy to share the allegations and discuss them with him. I've never received a phone call from your office. When they did call your office, your co-counsel was unavailable.
I mean, he tried to be available, and I, he asked for a movement of time, and that was not given, so.
He didn't hear anything about a movement of time until shortly before the meeting. The initial thing we got was the date, and your co-counsel didn't indicate he had a problem with the date when he first contacted my office.
He was in the hospital.
I mean, we just want to, you know, I, this is, the, the previous attorney before our firm took over, he was also in the hospital.
Who was that?
Phil Griffin.
Phil Griffin? Did Mr. Griffin have any other attorneys in his office?
So it was, the, the firm was Clark Griffin. Nick was an associate there, potentially a partner. I think Phil was working on this alone. Again, I don't, I, you know, I'm not 100% sure on this. This, that makes sense.
Oh, yeah, I understand. I think you'd agree that there are a number of other attorneys in the Portland metro area, Scapuce, St. Helens, and potentially Mr. Griffin had other attorneys in his office.
Maybe so. I'm not 100% sure.
So now, we're going to give citizens a chance to, an opportunity to provide comment in accordance with the council rules and procedures, so that each speaker will have five minutes. Please, five minutes. And they will be coming in via Zoom. So if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand, and we'll click on your name and your video and make the video available, and you should have a public comment. Please keep it limited to five minutes.
I do not have anybody. I, I see one person raising their hand. It looks like, I believe this is Al Peterson. Al, I see you have raised your hand. I'm trying to get you to unmute and start your video.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Al, we can.
Oh, okay, good. This is kind of an interesting case, but I have a number of questions. Under what authority is this, are all of these charges being made? We have a secret investigation which has not evidently been shared, and it has only been presented orally to the accused. The city, sounds like the city has refused to give the written report to the accused or his attorney, and they're claiming client privileges in their refusal to give the report. Well, what about disclosure? refusal to give the report. Well, what about disclosure laws? In any normal case, and client and attorneys, uh, working together, there's something called disclosure. And when a, when a, when a client and an attorney ask for disclosure from the other attorneys, more or less, it's ethical for the other attorneys to disclose what it is they're talking about, what evidence they have, what they're accusing this person of, and who the witnesses are. There has been no, uh, mention in this, other than Mr. Topaz, where these accusations are coming from, other than, I guess, city staff. So, nobody knows, except, I guess, the city attorney and the investigator, where these proposals, supposed accusations are coming from. So, it sounds like, uh, you know, the guys up there at the water tank don't like the fact that some city counselor shows up and is looking around. Or it sounds like that, you know, at some storm drain on the corner of Fourth Street, city workers don't like the fact that the city counselor shows up and is lozing around. So, you know, it sounds like my city counselor, in this case, one of my city counselors, is actually doing his job. He's out, looking around, checking on city projects, checking on things that the city's doing, and, uh, basically doing what he was elected to do. So, then my other question is this, you know, where in all of the city ordinances, I assume this proceeding is being done under some city ordinance. So, somebody said something about harassment or something like that. Um, you know, I can't read anything because it's all secret. Uh, somebody said something about harassment. I did a quick search while I was sitting here in the city code, and the only location in the city code where it mentions harassment is the harassment of wildlife. So, I guess Mr. Topaz was using his BB gun to shoot at the, the deer in front of his house. I don't know, because guess what? It's secret. So, here we have a whole bunch of secret allegations coming from unknown people, uh, presented in what, I don't know, appears to be, uh, some kind of judicial proceeding, and according to the public notice, because I don't know what else is, uh, assumed, according to the public notice, it's some kind of disciplinary action or dismissal. Well, did anybody happen to read the city charter? The city charter only has two particular items where a city counselor can quote "be dismissed." One is if he's declared by a judge to be incompetent, or two, if he gets convicted of a crime and goes to jail. So, where has that occurred? So, where is the authority that the city council can either dismiss Mr. Topaz or discipline Mr. Topaz? And the last thing, I think, that I want to say, um, oh, now I forgot what it was. So, um, to me, this, this entire proceeding is completely out of order. It has no basis under any city ordinance. The investigation guy who just presented didn't even present under what law supposedly these allegations are being, um, brought on Mr. Topaz. So, what laws are we talking about here? There's no, there's no harassment law in the city of St. Helens. So, you know, break the allegations. What are the allegations? Cite the law that you're citing these allegations on.
Mr. Peterson, your, your five minutes is, can you wrap it up, please, your five minutes?
Well, that's pretty much it, you know. Cite the law that you're actually supposedly, um, making these allegations, and what law that, um, he supposedly broke. Sounds to me like, you know, he was doing his job.
Thank you, Al. Phil, can you answer the-
Mr. Mayor, are those all the comments that-
Oh, yeah. Is that all the comments?
We have one person coming on.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Brady Brean.
Brady, can you please keep your talk to five minutes, please?
Sure. Uh, so, my first comment would be, um, I don't often agree with Al on anything. This would be one of those situations, except for one point that he made. I would like to know, um, the authority that the city does have to dismiss someone. Not that I'm disagreement with it. I would just like to know what that process is and how that happens, and if someone here can explain it. My second point is your audio was horrible. I could hear Al just fine, unfortunately, but I couldn't hear anybody else. We're almost a whole news. Um, this, this hearing sort of reminds me of the impeachment trials of Donald Trump. In the first impeachment trial, everybody said, "Oh, well, he's learned his lesson, and he'll be good." And from then on, he will go on to be a normal city counselor. Steve Topaz is priding today, going on about crap that happened probably more than a decade ago, tells us he has not learned his lesson. And while I have certainly disagreements with many city councilors on many different issues, so far, I do not believe that any of the city council, regardless of whether I agree with you or don't agree with you, is not looking for the best interest of the city. You can work for the best interest of the city, and we can, and I can disagree with you, but I do believe that that is, you might be wrong, but I do believe that is a bit of what you're doing. Mr. Topaz, however, is the exception to that on this city council. His entire bidding, which he has publicly stated in the council meeting, is to get even with the city. And he has said that, and he's said it publicly, and he's stated it on the record. And his entire bidding is to try and screw things up and to make things difficult, and that is why he is there, to see how much money he can cost the city, to see how much maneuverages he can throw in anything that happens to the city. And I think that's not unacceptable, um, for a city councilor. He may disagree with you, as I often do, but when he chooses to run for office, he has the responsibility to work for the good of the city, not for his personal reasons and not to obstruct the city, even if he disagrees with them. Once the council has made his decision, it is his job as a city councilor to support and go with the city council and support the city council instead of being an obstructionist. The entire hearing, the fact that it took since November and how many delays, showed you that his whole objective is just to lay, delay, delay, including a letter that he sent after the initial investigation started, that lists 15 or 12 some different conditions that go back about the no property sale, and that he didn't properly, he wanted some documentation of the sale of the property. It's like, this was handled by attorneys. This was done legally. It was registered, new special documentation, complaining about how that round shouldn't be city administrator, which is the decision of the entire council meeting. You don't get a go back as a city council that would complain about that, and then decides that he wants to make Rachel Berry city administrator. I mean, it, it would have lit me every single thing that tells me he has not learned his lesson, and in fact, by the contrary, he is going to continue to just try and screw the citizens of St. Helens frankly, and see how much he is not untried without hearsance. He is not there to try and do his job. He is there to try and make things as difficult as possible. And I think the volatile complaints that are in front of you, um, that you, you have said and read, that, um, and I do think that those shouldn't be in public with proper reactions to protect the identity of the people. But those complaints against him are, are case in point, and should you not do anything tonight to him, um, then you're just going to involve him, as Donald Trump was involved in. And, um, I don't think that that's a direction that we can go.
Okay, thank you, Brady. Matt, do you see any other, uh, public comment?
Uh, I do not see any other public comments. Um, councilor, is a staff member allowed to speak?
Um, I would, I would say yes, yes.
I would like to read a prepared statement. I will keep it to less than five minutes. Um, greetings, councilmembers. I come to you as someone in a leadership role within this city. I've come to you in a role that's a governing body, not once, and now not twice, but three times, in an effort to speak honestly and candidly about what has been happening in this workplace, and what I have personally dealt with in my interactions with Stephen Topaz, violations of our Code of Ethics, the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity and Conduct Expectations. My first complaint came on July 5th, 2019, almost two years ago. It outlined three very clear situations of slandering employees, admitted harassment, and public humiliation of your employees. I also outlined four specific areas in the St. Helens Code of Ethics that I believe Stephen Topaz has violated and has proven himself to be a hindrance to the employees on a daily basis with his interactions, as well as being incoherent during public meetings with statements of half-truths and misguided mathematics. His behavior is disruptive to the future of this community, and he impacts the staff's ability to fulfill the city's mission and vision. He has fully admitted to getting elected to causing trouble for this city, and admittedly, he has now succeeded. In my first official complaint, I asked for one thing at the end, one thing only. I asked for a public apology to be read during a public meeting, so that all staff could hear it directly from him, and a written apology that could be given to the employees specifically impacted regarding the improper treatment and creation of a hostile work environment. An apology that shows an understanding of what was done, why it was wrong, and what will be done in the future to avoid these issues. As a governing board, you failed to take any action. Two counselors that sit in there now, and two previous counselors that sat there, let his, let his actions continue without any recourse. Now, two new counselors have started and have begun to see Stephen in action. I assume that counselors have read the final report that you and I have not even seen, and I am one of the complaints against him. Until tonight, all of you have remained silent. Your silence is acceptance of his behavior. In August 2020, I wrote a follow-up complaint noting that nothing has been done, and the city council has remained silent in acceptance of the continued behavior. I informed city council in writing of the disparaging remarks that I have witnessed related to a certain city employee. Again, no action was taken by city council. In late 2019, I had had enough and attempted to seek an employment in another city. During that hiring process, newspaper articles from Stephen Topaz's editorials in Spotlight Newspaper were cited that included accusations disparaging my professional career as a finance director. I say to you on this day that I feel my future as, and my professional career has already been tarnished by his false accusations and disparaging comments. For someone like me who's only 38, I have a long time to go before I can retire, and I do not know if I will ever get the next opportunity because of Stephen Topaz and the damage that he has already caused. During the hiring process of our new public works director, I overheard several times Stephen Topaz make inappropriate comments regarding people that we're interviewing. This included race, education, and even sex in relation to a male or female public works director. These are crystal clear violations of the Equal Employment Act. The day of final interviews, I withdrew my name from the nominated committee based on the opinions from our attorneys to personally protect myself from any potential legal action that could be taken by those that were in that team. As a city council, you failed again to act, allowing him to continue to be involved in the hiring process, knowing full well of his bias against one of the applicants. Just a few meetings ago, during a work session, Stephen Topaz essentially called me a drug dealer and a thief. You all sat there in silence as a council. It was me who had to ask the attorney to say something and request an apology from him. Then, at the evening meeting, I received an email apology that was nothing short of mansplaining it of what he intended to say. At that evening meeting, my apology was met with more mansplaining of what he intended to say. A real apology does not include this. All he had to say was, "I'm sorry for calling you those things, and it will not happen again." But he chose not to do that. He chose to try and codify his position again with knowledge of half-truths and hearsay on situations that have never happened at the city of St. Helens and have never happened in my career. The weeks following these statements, I was the butt of many jokes around City Hall. I have the right to work at a place where I am not discouraged and I am not humiliated by one of my leaders, a city councilor, and that right has been violated. I have heard Stephen Topaz refer to people in this community as Chinamen, cripples, and these are words that have never, should never be heard by our community. They are clear violations of our Code of Ethics, clear violations of the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity, and clear violations of our conduct expectations. And I stress again, not even an apology has been offered to our community for all those that have been offended. For a third time now, I urge the city council to act, ensure resolve, and that you value the dedicated employees and volunteers of this city and your community as a whole, so that we can finally have a resolution to this matter and move forward. I know it is difficult with our current governing policy and our charter because there is no easy or clear path for you to take. I know this is not something any of you signed up for. It's definitely not something that I signed up for. But when will enough be enough for you to act? How far are you willing to accept this behavior? You hold the keys as elected officials. You lead this community. Make the decision so that we can start to heal and find peace. I cannot guarantee much in life, but one thing that I can guarantee is that the cost of doing nothing will be far greater than the cost of a decision to dismiss Stephen Topaz as a city councilor. Thank you.
Okay. So, now, I'm going to turn over to our new council to answer a few questions that were raised by Mr. Brean and, um, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to do the best I can. So, for council, my name is Bill Monahan, uh, with the City Attorney's Office. So, Mr. Peterson raised a number of issues, and by the way, we had received his earlier email yesterday where he made a, a number of, uh, issues noted. He's asked what authority the council has to dismiss a member of council, and in fact, there is not authority under our charter or our laws to dismiss a council member. The reason that we've used that citation is that through this process, the council has had an opportunity to utilize its investigation and protect it as an exempt record. So, we've used ORS 192, 660, Section 2. I'm not sure exactly what the, the letter is on that, but we used that. And in the most recent discussion, we had conversation that if the council wanted to move forward and for the first time have conversation about what might be the options to take any disciplinary action. The citation on that is ORS 192, 660, Section 2B, which says specifically that to consider the dismissal or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, et cetera. So, we've used that language to parrot what the ORS was, that we were considering utilizing until Counselor Topaz asked for the hearing. We wanted to make sure we kept a uniformity of the process, so we've used the word dismissal. But, the charter does not give authority to the city council to remove a member of city council. There are some charters that I've seen in the state of Oregon, home rule state, that there are some specific references to a process that can be used to remove a council member. The city of St. Helens does not have that. So, we need to move specifically to other opportunities for, for discipline. And later on in this meeting, I'll be happy to go over with you some of the potential methods, if you're interested in hearing further. The, the second issue Mr. Peterson raised, and maybe I won't get them all, but I'll try to get as many as I can. He mentioned that we only have orally raised the issues to Counselor Topaz, and you've already heard a discussion about that. There was one opportunity, unfortunately, he was not able to attend that meeting. We did not receive any notice in advance of that. I believe my recollection is that the mayor received an email from Counselor Topaz the evening before, the night of the hearing, and if I remember, what the mayor read to us was that, "I will be at the meeting. I'm, I got out of the hospital today." So, there could have been a contact by Counselor Topaz or someone else earlier, and perhaps the council could have considered moving the meeting. But as you know, setting a council meeting, coordinating the schedules of all- coordinating the schedules of all those involved is quite a difficult task sometimes. But it was the opportunity for councillor Topaz, as we've said before, to see the report. The city has refused to give the report. Well, in fact, again, we've covered that. There was mention of, in any normal case, there is disclosure from attorneys. Well, that's in a criminal setting. This is not a criminal setting. This is an administrative setting. So, there aren't the rules of conduct for a criminal setting. That just doesn't apply. There was a comment about the right to participate for councillor Topaz, and his lawyer raised objections. And as Peter pointed out, we did make the opportunity available for contact by your associate to contact Pete and have conversation. That's been over a week. I believe it was on around the 14th, or maybe it was the 13th, that we first learned that there was a lawyer involved for councillor Topaz. Now, referred tonight that that lawyer is from the same firm that councillor Topaz has had in the past. So, there's obviously been many opportunities for a lawyer to contact us or to be involved to represent councillor Topaz. Where in the city ordinances are... Is there a basis for the various complaints? Well, what you've heard is, one of the complaints is about discrimination. And the city has a personnel policy. It doesn't... All the city's rules and regulations don't have to be in a city code or a municipal ordinance or a charter. The city has the right to regulate the workplace and to protect the employees by having an appropriate workplace. And as a result, there are policies and procedures that apply not only to the employees and their conduct, but approximately two years ago, the state of Oregon decided that it was necessary to ask and require all cities to put in their policies an anti-harassment policy that applies to both elected officials and volunteers. So, there is a specific policy that applies to discrimination, as is there a policy about bullying, as is there a policy about the use of having an appropriate workplace where people are not discriminated against because of any race, religion, et cetera. So, the authority for these complaints is within various policies and rules that the city has in place. Disciplinary action? Well, as I mentioned, I'll be happy to go over what some of those disciplinary actions might be.
My question would be this. You asked about the criminal... You said about the criminal aspect of that.
Disclosure, that's right.
With the... I don't know if this is... If it's criminal, but I know it's ethics for sure. The 2019 budget meeting hearing, April 20th, where I personally actually called him out on his behavior in that meeting, if you watch that video. That was, in my eyes, was unethical. It was trying to move a project towards a property that he... The lawsuit was filed in 2009. This is 10 years later, and he had been a councillor, first year on the budget. And he's immediately attacking what appears to me was coming in under the ran for that specific agenda, is what I assume, because that's what I heard immediately in the budget, which budget runs a lot of different cities. So, that's very concerning to me that he has had that deep of, maybe, some issues with the city. And I know there's plenty of former meetings that the councillor said they were familiar with councillor Topaz, that over this stormwater project on his house that he lost on a lawsuit and was really trying to direct a stormwater drains facility, talking about the park over here. And you can go back and watch it on video. It is absolutely on video. It's April 20th, 2019, and I do not... I feel it's very unethical, and I think that is criminal. So, under that basis, that's why I'm asking, is it criminal?
So, Mr. Mayor, no, in fact, it's not criminal. However, there is a statute that applies, and that's ORS Chapter 244, which is the statute that applies to public officials. The Oregon Government Ethics Commission is responsible for administering Chapter 244. And that chapter says that a public official is not able to use their position for personal gain. So, that is certainly something that if there are facts that substantiate a penalty, that is something that the Oregon Ethics Commission can look at, and the Ethics Commission can look at issues that go back as far as four years. So, they would not be able to go back to 2009, as I heard you say, but if there were some action that was taken 10 years later, 2019, that would be within the four years. So, that would be the authority there. And I don't want to go into details about the report other than to say, the investigation was evaluated issues. The city council does not have the ability to enforce on ORS 244.
Exactly.
So, I hope I answered your question.
You did, absolutely.
And then, where is the authority for discipline? Well, that comes through the city's authority to apply its rules and regulations and its policies, and to make a determination of whether someone's actions rise to the... Whether someone's conduct, rather, is appropriate for the position. And as we've heard, there were comments made... The last speaker... I'm sorry, the second speaker made some very compelling comments about the responsibilities of a member of the city council. That members of the city council swears that they will enforce the Constitution, et cetera, including local ordinances, local regulations. And you have policies. You have a policy on operating rules and procedures. You have another policy on the governing policy. These are Resolutions Number 1837 and 1838. Both of those are appropriate to refer to for if there have been violations, what can this council do? Well, it's not clear exactly what action leads to a penalty. That's something for the city council, in a peer relationship, to make a determination of whether one of its members should receive some sort of discipline. And that can be something like a public censure. It can be a letter from the council. It can be a resolution. It can be a restriction of some of the abilities of that city council member to have access, say, to employees who have raised complaints or who have felt that they have been either bullied, discriminated against. It affects their ability to work, creates stress on them. You have a responsibility as a city council, and I know you know this, to protect all of your employees and to have the efficient operation of the city. Now, what I've heard councillor Topaz say, and I'm not doing anything but trying to answer questions. Councillor Topaz has said that he has been out there doing various things to using his knowledge and his expertise to check on certain things to make sure they're done right. Well, you have professionals to do that, who have that as their responsibility. A member of the city council is one individual in a group of five. As you all know, you operate as a group of five unless the council delegates or the charter. The charter or the council delegates to an individual a certain level of authority. Now, you have within your governing policy a statement that says that members of the council will be assigned one or more city departments to be affiliated with. And you've gone through a process to review what level of authority there would be for a member of city council. And as I understand it, the council works as a collaborative decision-making process, but the majority of responsibility rests with the city administrator. It's his responsibility to do the day-to-day operation. And again, a council member doesn't have the right to step in and either oversee the work of an employee or to challenge the work of a contractor or an employee. So, these are basic rules of efficient operation of government that you have lived by, and there's an expectation that any city council member needs to live by those. So, there was reference that this whole proceeding is out of order. Well, we've gone to great lengths to have a process that was fair, that was objective, and to give the complainants, as well as the person who the complaints were filed against, opportunity to get their input in so it could be properly reviewed by an investigator. And you know that process has taken place as a record of that. I think I've covered everything that was stated by Mr. Peterson. The second speaker asked, what authority does the city have to dismiss? And I've covered that. The city does not have that authority. Now, the third speaker, Matt Brown, has raised a number of issues. You've heard some of those issues before, and he's called on your responsibility as councillor who is aware of issues that have been raised by your employees and by others against councillor Topaz. He's saying you have a responsibility to act. And we totally agree with that. And I know from my involvement with you that you have been following our guidance as we've cautiously gone through this process to protect the employees, to make sure that there is some action. I've heard council members raise at the executive sessions, "We need to get something out there. We need to speak with our employees. We need to take action." But you, as a councillor, have been more than generous in providing councillor Topaz an opportunity to have his day and to have his opportunity to speak. So, that has happened tonight. I think you're now at a place that should you wish to take some action, we can talk about what those various forms of discipline might be. And I will say, they're somewhat limited. We can also talk, if you wish, about, well, going forward, if your concern is that perhaps councillor Topaz might not get the full message and become compliant with process, you might be able to make some changes. We can give you some suggestions on some potential process changes. In fact, you considered one of those in 2010, when the charter was put before the voters to make a modification that would have created an avenue for the city council to actually have the right to dismiss a council member for a specific action. I'm not saying in any way councillor Topaz has violated that. That's not been the investigation. I would say that you would have the right in the future to put before the voters, and they are the only ones who can approve a charter amendment. The voters could decide to make a change and to create a process going forward for potential dismissal. So, I'll turn it over to Peter because I think he wanted to comment on one of the comments that Mr. Brown raised.
So, the council is in a somewhat unique position, and the points raised by Mr. Brown are well-taken. The council is in an odd situation in that councillor Topaz is not an employee. He's an elected official. So, the council is really dealing with two separate issues here. You're dealing with councillor Topaz and his conduct. But the council and the city is also an employer. So, the city has an obligation to investigate the complaints and the concerns that were raised by Mr. Brown and others. You got a question about the authority for the investigation and how that happened. It's twofold. The first was the council approving the investigation on September 16. It included a number of concerns that were raised, including councillor Topaz potentially acting for his own benefit. And then, the city also had an obligation, as an employer, to conduct an investigation into the employment-related issues raised by Mr. Brown and others. Those were the... And Bill articulated it well. When he said that the policies and the procedures required you to go through that investigation as an employer. And the Oregon Workplace Fairness Act, which Bill was referring to, sets out that complaint procedure and sets out that investigation procedure. That's what the city has done, and that's what the investigation is. Councillor Topaz is correct, and his attorney is correct. He is not required to participate in an investigation. He simply isn't. He's an elected official, and your ability to discipline him is in the context of an elected official. But as an employer, the city also has an obligation to make sure that it protects its employees from vendors, third parties, contractors, or other people like that that create a hostile work environment or participate in discriminatory behavior. That's the second part of what the city has to decide what it's going to do, is how it does that with respect to councillor Topaz. Because those allegations related to councillor Topaz's conduct were substantiated. Councillor Topaz raised a number of issues, suggested that what went on was politically motivated, perhaps, or was motivated because he called out these issues. I think the council can't ignore the fact that even if that was the case... So, even assuming for the benefit of the doubt that people made complaints because they were unhappy with councillor Topaz, those complaints were all substantiated. An independent investigator that has no affiliation with the city substantiated many of those complaints based upon her review of the public record and council meetings. And the conduct that we're talking about is not conduct that is necessarily related to councillor Topaz raising questions about people's performance. It's about behavior that the council has already indicated is inappropriate and unacceptable under its charter, under its policies, and under its procedures. That's really what we're talking about here. And I don't want to make... I want to make sure that we do talk about the fact that with respect to Mr. Brown, even if councillor Topaz is unwilling to apologize, that doesn't mean that the council can't apologize.
Well, I know I will apologize to Mr. Brown and all the city staff who have been affected by the situations that have transpired between them and councillor Topaz. I know that I'm truly sorry that that has happened. It is very truly cunning, baffling, and powerful as far as how do we deal with this? He's an elected official. Al Peters said that he's my councillor. He's right. He's Al Peterson's councillor. He represents Al and many others. How do we go about... But yet, we have a workforce, a work environment that could be hostile. If you've ever worked for a hostile boss, even if he's not hostile all the time, it's the times that he is. And finally, what do you say? "I'm done. I'm out of here." That's old school. Nowadays, you can get sued. The city's open up for a liability. Can be sued. And it has been stated a number of times that there is no care in the world about the city getting sued from Mr. Topaz. Just so his and my citizens know that voted for me, that he does not care if the city spends hundreds of thousands of dollars on attorney or gets sued because of his actions. And he has stated that publicly to this entire council, the old council especially, a number of times. Publicly. Brady Preheim is right. That is absolutely true. And I do find that your conduct and, again, in that April 20th, 2019 budget committee meeting hearing is very unethical when you're trying to direct a stormwater project to your property when you already lost the lawsuit in 2009. And half of his information in his testimony earlier was erroneous. And I would like to make council rules in the future that unless you are speaking on your own behalf, you need to make clear that when you're talking numbers or figures or anything about city business, that this is my own belief, unless you have a handwritten document that proves otherwise. Because it's just erroneous facts, and that's what's been going on. Bombshells. Boom. And the staff has had to put up with this all the time. You can watch it. It's on video sustained. On September 16th, when we ordered this investigation, the investigator, I know, reached out a number of times to Mr. Topaz to try to interview him. How many times? Has she documented it all?
Eight different times.
Eight different times. We have heard there was an attorney for months, and he has continued to evade every meeting that we have. These are important. These are... If I had five allegations like that against me, I can tell you what, that's serious business. It is. I just think... I'm speaking because I am an elected official. I'm speaking from my own words right now. If I had those allegations come against me, I would definitely, if they were not true, would have hired an attorney a long time ago and been very methodical and would have addressed the attorneys back and forth. And then, I would have, if they were erroneous, I would have asked for my attorney's fees to be paid because they were erroneous, if I was really on the right side. That's just me personally. And I did speak that from my own opinion. Earlier was factual, though. Earlier was factual, though, the previous statements. So I, I would love to further discuss what some disciplinary actions could look like. I'd like to, I'd love to give them direction.
Do you want a little talk from the council, any opinions from?
Yeah, we absolutely can talk, yes, yes.
Well, I was interested in what Mr. Topaz had to say. And he didn't say a thing about the five allegations, and that's why I'm here. We had a huge, huge process in obtaining and interviewing all the staff members that had problems with Mr. Topaz. So what, what I heard was just nothing about the allegations. I just heard kind of his life story about what's gone on in St. Helens and in other places. So he's like, allegations are pretty darn important, I believe. And my question to our legal counsel is, does this set the framework for civil lawsuits against Mr. Topaz? Or is he protected in any way because he is an elected official? Because these are, these are, these are serious. Reading through these are very serious allegations. And so my question is, is there enough for the staff? If I was a staff member and felt harassed, bullied, and abused? If I was Mr. Topaz, I would worry about a civil suit. And I don't know if this sets the framework for that or not. Is that, just that investigation, just that process, that procedure, as the way it is now? Now, the council, the council is not going there. We can't do that. We can't, we have other disciplinary avenues possibly that we can follow. But I'm concerned about the people who got interviewed. I'm concerned about each one of those individuals who came forward and said and testified about what had happened to them. And so I just think, I just, I just don't think that it's going to stop here no matter what.
So I can let Bill weigh in on the actual individual liability of a counselor and their role as a counselor. He can do that. I think the question for the employees, it's obviously things that they have to weigh on their own and after their own consultation with lawyers. We don't represent any of the individual employees, and it's inappropriate for us to advise them as to what they could do. The investigation is something that the city, as an employer, in part is obligated to do, and did that. So whether it sets a framework for additional legal action is not really the question. The reason the investigation is done for the city as an employer is to determine what kind of things it needs to do to remedy that situation as an employer. The other piece of the investigation, like we talked about, was whether there was misuse by Councilor Topaz of his office or for personal benefit. That's something the council gets to deal with. Again, two separate issues. But with respect to your question about would the individual employees have personal claims against Councilor Topaz directly, that's really up to them. There have obviously been comments that Councilor Topaz has made that were sustained, where he impugned their credibility or their qualifications, where he suggested, in one instance in a public meeting, that he made an allusion to one person potentially being using drugs. Mr. Brown's comments were concerning. And as an attorney, it was possibly could give rise to liability, potential personal liability. But that's not something that we're here to talk for an opinion on, and we have to actually be very careful about doing that because there is no relationship we have with those folks as our clients. With respect to Councilor Topaz's individual liability, as a counselor, I can let Bill deal with that. But just because he's a counselor doesn't automatically shield him from lawsuits.
So my counsel, my comments, Councilman Morton, members of the council, I agree with Pete's analysis. The statement I made earlier, a member of the city council is able to act as a member of the body. And when a council member acts as a member of the body and carries out the responsibilities that he or she has, including those that might be delegated by the council, and obviously in none of these cases have we heard that there's any delegation that's been made. When a council member is operating as a member of council and carrying out the work of the city, the laws of the city, there is coverage by your insurance carrier, CIS. However, CIS will not provide coverage when an individual steps out of that responsibility and starts to take part in something that could be an unlawful act and an act that is not within the realm of their responsibility. So there could be exposure. I'm not saying there is exposure. I'm saying there could be exposure. And the city does not have a responsibility to defend someone's actions when they have stepped out of their role as a council. Let me leave it at that, if I could, if that adequately answers your question, counsel.
I think it does. My concern is for, specifically for our staff. And you heard Mr. Brown's testimony about, he came to the council not only once, but twice, but three times, and we did nothing. And so, you know, this process that we are going through now, hopefully, should yield some positive effects for, or positive opportunities for our staff if they want to go further individually. And that's my concern. Because if I was a staff member and that happened to me, I know where I would be going. And I know that possibly the framework of what we're doing now could help in that, could aid in that, in that fight.
That's a good point. I'm going to reiterate and kind of add to just a little bit of that, okay? So like, let's say, for example, in his body, but we heard some testimony here earlier that I know is erroneous, and I know for a fact Doug and I oversee public works as well as administration. The water tank where Mr. Topaz was out there in his investigation, he showed up unannounced, no hard hat, no safety jacket, and was actually looking inside of a water tank, unannounced. Nobody knew he was there. It's a very, OSHA would have a fit, and Councilor Topaz should know that. You can't be looking into a deep water tank. And the staff's like, "No, you can't even be around that project. That's why you were told not to go out there." And it is not true, again, that we dumped millions of gallons into a creek all at once. That is just not true. I can guarantee it. I can guarantee it. And you said you turned us into the EPA. You didn't let any of this council know about millions of gallons being turned into a creek illegally. We knew that we needed to empty it because the contractor failed again. We are all familiar with that, Councilor Topaz, including you. So how do we deal with that? How do we deal with that statement, what was just made here, knowing the facts behind it? Because he speaks, and these reporters grab it, and they may take it and run with it. And it's erroneous.
So one way to address that, Mr. Mayor, if all the council members have an opportunity to speak before I get to laying out your various options. One option is you could ask a resolution or issue some sort of a statement that identifies the things that have come out through this investigation and hearing that you want to set straight with the public. And one of the things that you could do is you could provide some sort of censure and identify because of these, these things that have been looked at and investigator has substantiated, and you have heard the report, and you've made your own findings, you wish that the public be aware of these things, that would be your opportunity to set the record straight, and you could include comments about statements that were made at this hearing.
And I want to add one thing that I think is important and is extremely important, given what Councilor Morton brought up, and I think it's a fair point. Councilor Morton, we're concerned about potential retaliation that people suffer, including witnesses that participated in the investigation or the complainants. The activity that those individuals engaged in is protected activity. The employer needs to take steps to make sure that they do not suffer from retaliation or retaliatory conduct because they participated in an investigation or because they brought a complaint. Those, again, are protected, and I think that that's important. The other thing that I wanted to add to Bill's comments, Mr. Mayor, this kind of tracks very much with what you're saying. If the council, and we're not making that determination, but if the council disagrees with statements that Mr. Topaz is making or doesn't agree with the conduct that's been alleged or laid out, I think the council needs to make sure it disavows that conduct from Councilor Topaz. And if the council members believe it's inappropriate, unacceptable, it's important that the council go ahead and do that. Bill makes a good point in that, to the extent that there are things that are inaccurate or that the council desires to comment on some of the allegations or some of the things that were stated, I think that the council has the right to do that and the ability to do that, to clarify it. But they need to do it in the proper forum, in the proper manner, which is a censure resolution, which we'll talk about.
I had a couple of things. So first of all, I think that we owe Councilor Topaz and his attorney the right to see the investigation. Whether or not we take the names out, that's fine. They need to see it, though. That's my thoughts on that. And then, second of all, I just want to say this to Councilor Topaz. We represent the people. We need to be professional in all aspects, including asking questions and looking into things. And that also means being politically correct, and that's something that we just have to do. So I hope you see that, and I hope you take that with you in all aspects of life, not just here, but everywhere we are. So those are my thoughts.
I agree with Counselor Chilton that, to some respect, that there's some way to provide information to Counselor Topaz and his attorney about the report to do that. But I am, I am prepared to move ahead with action prior to that, you know, happening. So from what I've heard tonight, I do regret that coming into this process, months after it began, I'm thinking in some ways, perhaps, Counselor Chilton and I, and I'm not trying to impinge the integrity of Mayor Scholl or Counselor Morton, that we were, have not been as personally involved in this. I do think that they are both doing their, you know, their utmost to look at this fairly and objectively. But perhaps, I think the fact that, you know, Counselor Chilton and I, I was, I have attended some of the meetings where some of these things happened, but I was kind of, you know, not as involved a participant, and think maybe bringing a different type of perspective and objectivity. But from what I have, what was presented to me in the report, and believing that we have provided adequate opportunity for timely response, I am, you know, ready to move forward in terms of hearing the suggestion, the recommendations laid out for a possible action of, of discipline, whether that be the public censure, the letter, et cetera. I am ready to move forward on that, whether or not Counselor Topaz sees or does not see the actual report. I do want to express my deep concern for the fact that going on a period of a couple of years where we have had city employees, I think above and beyond the call of patience or even civility to wait for the council to take action, has been admirable and, but I don't think we can allow any more time to pass. And I think even before a statement of, and maybe we will do these things at the same time, choosing some type of dismissal, but also making a clear message to our staff and employees. And I'm hearing that from everyone, that our employees need to know that they, that we will protect them going forward. And we need to make a clear statement, whether that is an apology to the employees for the, or is that a clear statement? But I think that has to include, again, this is uncomfortable, given that Counselor Topaz was elected by the citizens. I guess I'm frankly relieved that our charter does not give us the choice of dismissal because that is something, but that is something that perhaps the voters will do, take into account at the next election, should Counselor Topaz seek reelection. So for me, coming in here, I always understood that dismissal was not one of the options. But we do need to, we do need to make some kind of other statement, whether, again, that's the censure, the letter, whatever. And I would like very much to hear our council lay out various scenarios and options.
So I personally have taken this kind of personally because what this happens is mainly in this building. And he comes in, and it's rumble, bumble, every day it was, every day. It was every day he was coming in here distracting the administration, which is what I oversee, and I've witnessed it a number of times. I would like to see some type of censorship where if he needs some information, that he'll get it, but he's not just going to come in every day with some off-the-wall stuff. And that was literally happening, I'm telling you, time and time again. And he has costed the city a number of dollars just in distractions. And that is evidently, and it is absolutely true. You can ask any person that works in this entire building if you aren't here at least three times a week, okay? There for a while was every single day. And I was patient, and I let you, allowed you to try to get informed, but it was like, you're not even going for information to serve citizens. You're going for information for self-serving purposes. Because I would ask, "What's he doing here?"
Mayor, I think-
This is my department and Doug's administration.
Maybe your comment actually reminded me of something I did want to say, is that concerning the fact of Counselor Topaz being- concerning the fact of Counselor Topaz being elected by the citizens and, you know, as he continues his job, needs to be able to do his job, but with definite restrictions and limitations imposed for the protection of our staff.
Yep. I am not in any way, shape, or form, and he cannot have information. There's a bunch of different ways we get it. Through email, we can have it put in a box, and if it's not sufficient, we can ask again. I am in no way, shape, or form, and maybe if you want to appoint, maybe if a council wants to appoint a liaison, I don't want to be, because I'm very busy, to Counselor Topaz, if he doesn't feel he's getting the information, a liaison of this council. And I'm not trying to appoint, you know, I'm giving you guys, if you don't want it, but it's an idea. It's an idea. If he feels like he's not getting this stuff through email, the liaison, whoever that is, Counselor Burke, Counselor Chilton, Counselor President Morton, I don't have time to. But that may be an option, too.
Well, I-
Go ahead.
Again, I'm concerned about the staff.
Yes.
I'm not so concerned as much about the council, because as, as Mr. Topaz comes to council, he's really done nothing. There's nothing that he's championed, there's nothing that he has positively pushed forward. It's all been negative, negative, negative. And we've just put up with that. It just doesn't seem to bother us, because we're moving forward. But if there was, if he had some clout, I could understand where, I could understand where we would be, or I would be heavily concerned about the council. I'm concerned about the staff, the staff being bullied and accosted. I think that is like, that is not right. So that's, if there's anything that we can do to protect our staff, that's what I'm after, and support our staff. So I don't know if you have any guidance for us or not with that recommendation. I don't know if the rest of the council feels that that's an appropriate question to ask and an advice to go ahead.
Can we hear from Topaz's attorney, or, I mean, any, how do you, what do you have to say about all this, very concerning?
I'm going to make a couple of comments about, lack of a word. It was brought up about me wanting my property taken care of at a budget meeting. Well, almost. My property is affected underground by the water. The request was to put a storm drain down the whole lot, it helped basically 20 homes. And it was also money to put gutters on the sidewalks. See, over the years, the city has been adding layers of asphalt to the road. In fact, when they dug the drain line to, they, what they call pothole, they cut a four-foot square hole to see what was there. And out in the Third, Fourth, and St. Helen Street, the asphalt is 18 inches thick. It's five layers of stuff. Originally, the sidewalks had drainage. After a number of layers of asphalt, the water runs off the road over the sidewalks into the backyards of not only my place, but all the places on Third and Fourth Street. So asking for a drain and gutters, it will help me, but it's going to help an awful lot of my neighborhood. But it was not presented as that. It was only presented that Mr. Topaz wanted something for him. When the city was checking on us in the, actually, the court, they surveyed the groundwater coming into my building.
Now, you're referring to 2009.
It was 2009, correct.
So that's what's confusing about this.
Let's go to 2009.
Counselor Topaz.
I'm talking, can I finish, please? And now I'll explain it.
I just want you to make sure that you're keeping two.
I am, I am. Don't worry about it. So when we started this, what's going wrong, the city came and surveyed the water. They sampled the water in my basement that's coming because the storm drain is not there, and they found out there's fecal coliform in there.
The investigation's already been done, Counselor Topaz.
I know, and this is what the city did, this is what this-
I'm trying to get through this meeting, Counselor Topaz.
Well, if you don't, if you're more worried about time than the truth, we can go right now.
Okay, all right.
Can I finish?
Yeah, I'll try to-
Can I finish, please?
How are we going with this?
Okay, I'm trying to tell you, and that's what you don't want to listen to. And so we have a dangerous health problem in the whole neighborhood, which will be taken care of by a public. And I presented bringing a storm drain through there, because what I put forth in 2010, I put forth when I was a councilman, that we still need a storm drain. We still need to keep the water from the streets, in the streets, not coming across the neighbors' yards, not across on both Third, Fourth. So this is a public health water problem that's continuing. Just the fact that we had a trial, and I didn't prove that the city was incompetent, the water still comes down, it still rains, it still runs across the sidewalk, it can be fixed. Now, you did the same thing, as they say, on top of Nob Hill. Good. Now, Mr. Brown was talking about me calling him a drug addict. Well, he missed one word, which gets to be important. It's really important. The discussion that evening was, we've got a drug addict. What, what would happen if Mr. Brown were a drug addict? Can we fire him? And the answer is no. We contest him, and he gets applied for a job, and that's it, unless he's a danger, a physical danger. So that should show up on the videotape of the thing.
Mayor, I think that we're creating further problems for-
I know.
The only reason why I wanted to ask it was because I was trying to get around to the point of what we're going to decide here today, and your input regarding that.
Well, if we need the truth, that's one thing. But half-truths were coming up now. You can say that I said Mr. Brown was a drug addict, but you've got to use that one word to make the whole truth. And the thing was, he was a man of great respect, and if he was a drug addict, even though he was an-
Could you get rid of him? Mr., can you please, enough?
Well, then I won't talk anymore. Okay.
Would you like to speak on behalf of your client?
You know, I think it comes down for me and Mr. Topaz is, you know, it's very hard for us to respond to these allegations that, you know, I personally am learning about today, and I had no opportunity to learn about until today. I know that we've discussed several times about Mr. Topaz's opportunity. He has said that he has not wanted to do that for various reasons. You guys can take those reasons for what you will, but at this point in time, you know, myself and attorney Nick Herman have not had an opportunity to review the report, and we're learning about these allegations, you know, an hour ago. So it's very difficult for us to respond to those.
Mr. Mayor, can I interject just briefly?
Peter.
I think the council needs to make clear that there are no intimations or anything else from the council, Matt Brown's drug use, or anything along those lines. That's speculation completely from Counselor Topaz. The council needs to make that clear, the council's position. Secondly, I understand your position. Your client has known about these allegations for literally, at the benefit of doubt for him, six weeks. He has chosen, apparently, not to share any of those with you. So I struggle to understand why you can't comment on his behalf. The council may decide that they will, in a vote, waive privilege, and we can share those allegations with you, but I don't. Counselor Topaz knows what they are. He absolutely knows what they are.
He has not received anything in writing, you know, that's-
So another thing is, Counselor Topaz has also admitted to myself and Council President Morton, when we've had executive session stuff, has taken executive session stuff to news medias that were welcome to attend but chose not to, and admitted to this entire council and staff that was actually taking records. And then, you know, so, I was just like, wondering where they, how they knew so much information after a meeting one time. And he says, I did it, murdered out, I did it. So-
Are those meetings public record?
So-
On executive sessions, so it's a privileged document. There's an obligation of anyone participating in the executive session not to disclose those materials. To do so is a violation of state law.
Yep.
Okay.
So there's been some mistrust, and this is very sensitive information that could go to a lot of different people. Why we didn't release it in an email or give them a copy of paper, we did invite Counselor Topaz to invite legal counsel to every hearing. It's been going on for quite some time, not hearing. Every session that we, if he felt an illegal counsel or is coming, got an investigation right here, we're going to go through it. He knew that. He emailed me, assured me that he had just had surgery, that he would be there. It's an email documented. That was, what was that, April 7th? Another meeting?
March 31 was the date that-
That's right.
We had the in-person meeting.
It was March 31st.
So it's March 17.
Yeah, it's hard to keep track of all the dates.
17th.
Yes. I'm not opposed to if an attorney, I don't know, is he legally bound if we decided we wanted to only show it to Counselor Topaz and make no copies?
No, so I think there's a distinction here. So the other reason that the report has held is because attorney-client privilege. If the council elects to waive attorney-client privilege, show it to a party, then the council can make that decision. But once that privilege is waived, it's waived.
Then we just release the whole thing. Which, you know, I mean, that's, again-
Something else to think about, which is that we are going to continue to get questions about this. Al Peterson, that was just the beginning. We're going to continue to get questions. So that's been my stance all along, is that we need to do something publicly. And here's the thing, I'm all for protecting the employees, that's absolutely number-one goal, but it's also about showing what happened and why we acted on it. That's also important. So regardless of how we think we might be looked at by the media or by citizens, we have to put the truth out there, and we have to show that we acted on it. That's my thought.
Counselor Chilton, there is another option that you have, and there is an executive summary of the investigation, which isn't the full investigation, but the council could elect to release the executive summary, which is a little bit more limited and could do it that way.
I think I'd prefer that. I think Counselor Chilton and I understand how difficult it can be when you are making choices, when you want the public to understand why you've done the, and the material that you base it on, but there's some times when you just can't. And I know I've mentioned before my time on the school board, some 20 years ago, when we dismissed our high school principal. And the next day, when I was approached by the press as board chair, and say, well, what? What did she do? I could only repeat the three grounds on which we did, no detail. And I know there are, and citizens began a recall petition against me and the three of the other members, et cetera. To this day, no one, you know, knows. It flew over. So, I mean, I guess I'm, I know there's going to be people throwing sticks, there's going to be people up in arms.
This is an elected official, too. Remember, this is an elected official we're talking about.
I understand that.
The people who are going to be upset.
And I understand that, but I also think, though, too, that if we do not have the okay from the employees who are named in this report or who have contributed to it, that it would completely undermine any credibility that we would have, that we're truly trying to protect, to provide a safe workplace for them and to provide that protection. I think that would undermine that.
It certainly would, but if the union came after to you and asked you to release that to the public, the union, which the individuals, our individuals belong to, would you feel different?
If I had the understanding that the union leadership had consulted, but also we have individuals here who are not members of the union, I mean, we have folks who are-
I understand that, though.
So I would think the individuals themselves.
There is another option you have as well, and you could release the executive summary with redactions, so that the redactions would protect the names of some of those individuals. And there's been some concerns by some of the counselors about retaliation or something along those lines. So you could consider releasing it with redactions and with a clear directive that everybody present should refrain from any type of retaliation, and retaliation inappropriate and unacceptable and won't be tolerated.
So could we maybe direct you to come up with something that would look like, you know, an elected summary that we could potentially see at the next meeting? Maybe you could afford, if he's representing Counselor Topaz and would like to reach out, maybe you could further our conversation? And I apologize, I'm bad with last names, too, and I know it was difficult to say.
It's a tough one, right?
We could allow that affordability, maybe, you know, just to-
And the investigator did prepare an executive summary at our direction, that is a summary of the investigation, and that's something that we could look at releasing with redactions if that's what the council would like. Again, that's got to be a decision from the council that's a clear waiver of the privilege.
What do you think? I mean, the redacted diversion releases it.
Yep.
That releases it.
Cool. I think there's a way to do it in a supportive fashion, so we just have to make sure it's done that way.
I'm just hoping it is supportive, because whoever gets a hold of it can do whatever they want with it, you know?
That's why we've got to get ahead of it.
That's why we're, yeah, and that's why we're here, trying to talk.
Exactly.
I do, I guess the one thing I would add is I think it's probably a good idea to check with the, with those that complained as to whether they're okay with it being released.
The redacted executive session.
The redacted executive summary.
Given that courtesy.
So you also have an elected summary, right, too?
Executive summary.
Executive summary. So that's a little different?
Yes, it's a summary of the report itself. The report itself is long.
Yes.
And this breaks it down.
It was very long. Yes.
The executive summary breaks it down.
Yes.
But you were also saying that the executive, we should seek or the go-ahead from the affected individuals for the report, for the release of the executive summary.
The council could consider consulting with those that were involved in the investigation who made the complaints as to whether they have any objection to being released.
This investigation was very thorough, methodical, well, the guy who did it was well put together. I'm only sorry that you couldn't make it, March 31st, Counselor Topaz. You said you just got out of hospital, but I was, there's a lot of information there, and a lot, a lot. 15 individuals backing up each other's stories and just, it was, you know, so, and her findings, you know, were sustained, so. her findings, you know, were sustained, so... Yeah, I guess we'll move forward with, do you wanna go with the executive summary, or do you wanna go with redacted summary?
The executive summary would be redacted, right? No names, no private information of these individuals.
Again, and, and I know, I keep saying this, it's up to the council and how that release ends up occurring.
I think that's probably the best thing. We definitely don't want any of their information in there.
Redacted executive summary.
And, and so, and I would like to also further discussion on other means of disciplinary restrictions to staff, and how that may look. I would also like to have something drawn up for future policies, as far as if this ever happens again, because really what is politically happening is your, people just get shamed into resigning, you know? And, and I don't think it's, I think there needs to be a governing body for accountability, you all do, to know their peers, and, and as elected officials, be able to do their, do their work, if they need to get rid of, you know? That's just me personally, you know? Recalls are just cumbersome, hard to get done, even if there is stuff there, you know? And I guess matters on who you know, is what I know from being a politician, is who do I know at the Spotlight or the Chronicle? Who do I know, who's gonna push it out? Right? Happens. It most certainly happens. And I've noticed that. So I think there needs to be some, some type of, at least council rules, that we have some more flexibility to... What it may look like, I don't know. Maybe this is a workshop down the road. But I think it's something we should discuss as a council. Maybe one of us could go rogue. We could. It happens.
So Mr. Mayor and Counsel, do you wanna separate the two?
Yeah.
Make the determination of what you'd like Peter to do with the summary, to work with Counsel Topaz's attorney, to provide him with what you give as direction?
Yep.
And then I can give you a summarization of some of the identified potential actions that you could do. They're limited.
Yes.
But I can identify those to you, and then you can give us direction either now or later of a specific one that you want us to come back with some details on, or maybe there's a combination of things that you would like us to do. We can proceed that way, but I'd like Peter to get some finalization of what you want him to do on the, on the first part. That's what I'm trying to separate.
Yeah, and I'd suggest that the council formally vote on whether you wanna waive the privilege and produce the executive summary to Counsel Topaz's counsel with redactions.
Redacted. So that would require a motion and a second.
Yep.
So I move that we direct the council to provide a redacted executive summary of the report, to make that available to Counsel Topaz's counsel.
A second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to authorize Counsel Topaz's attorney a redacted version of the investigation, correct?
Executive summary is whatever.
Executive summary.
Executive summary. Waving the attorney-client privilege.
Waiving the attorney-client privilege.
With respect to the executive summary.
With respect of the executive summary.
So, yeah.
So moved.
It was already...
It's already moved and...
Already moved.
So moved.
Already moved.
So discussion.
Discussion and...
Discussion, I, discussion, I'm just, I'm getting concerned, you know, that this, so Counsel Topaz and his legal counsel know that we're gonna release this to you? As of right now, nobody here in this city that I know of wants to, is this gonna be a public record after this? Is that what we're making a motion on? Is that what we're making a motion on? Because it can go two ways.
Potentially.
Either, because again, about being political and being in front of stuff, Counselor Topaz and his counsel, is being in front of stuff. If this is the case, you know, are you going to, I wanna be out in front of this thing. I'm not gonna have some article written to the Spotlight saying, "Lies, lies, lies." We have done a thorough investigation, I can guarantee you that, the city has. Very methodical, well thought out. It, its findings are facts with video and multiple witnesses behind it. So if this is gonna become public record, I, I have no issue with that, but we're gonna be out in front of it immediately. And we'll just release it to...
So Mr. Mayor, we have received a public records request from Counsel Topaz's attorneys for waiving the privilege. This would potentially become material that'd be responsive to that public records request.
Okay.
Does that conclude it enough for you, an answer?
So, so, so made a public records request, which would be processed through an administrative, whatever our policies are, to release that. So, okay, who, who makes, who is, makes that decision? Is that the council makes that decision to release that, or is that something, a public information request?
Once all the evidence requested.
What I'm just saying, that's, okay. So I'm not sure how, so that information, I'm not sure how that impacts, or my, what we're trying, it doesn't...
The question was, does this become a public record?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was the question.
Okay.
By waiving the privilege, it likely becomes a public record that is, can be obtained by, by council.
Yeah.
Or anybody that...
This is what we're trying to...
And furthermore, we can, we can let reporters know that we have, and here it is. That happens.
Here's our explanation.
Yes. That happens.
Okay. It's redacted.
Okay, so we have an executive summary that's been redacted, and we're going, we're approving the authorization of Counselor Topaz's counsel, who made a public record request for the ability to get it.
Yes.
And it's been motioned and seconded. Counsel Berkeley made the motion, Counsel Chilton seconded it. Counsel Topaz, I'm calling the vote.
Aye.
Counsel, uh, Berkeley.
Aye.
Morton?
Aye.
Counsel Chilton?
Aye.
Nominate as well.
So we will release the executive summary with redactions to Counsel Topaz's attorney, without waiver of attorney-client privilege as to the other materials, so...
I'd like to make a motion that we reduce, release the investigative report in the same manner.
I didn't hear that.
I made a motion to release the investigative report in the same motion, in the same way we have the redacted executive summary.
Anybody wanna second that?
I don't think it's appropriate, Counsel Topaz. I think that the executive summary, for now, if it becomes an issue, we can always readdress that, correct?
Yeah?
I don't think that's a good idea.
Right. But I'm saying if...
Yeah, I mean, you know, there, because that opens up too many liabilities for individuals who have come, who have come forward. I, I...
There's a lot in there, Counsel Topaz, and I, there's a lot of really sensitive information in there. So I just don't believe that it's in anyone's best interest to release the whole thing.
I can't reply to that. I didn't see it. I mean, to me, it's nothing.
I understand that, and it's really...
And that's why I asked. Well, fine. I mean, if you wanna hide it from me, do it officially. Say, "No second." Put it away.
Motion dies, no second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that, well, I don't think, I can just rush you, I can just direct Bill to come back with us. I can't make a motion without you, right?
So do you wanna hear what the potential options are for this, Mr. Mayor and Counsel? And then after hearing that, if you'd like to give us direction on any specific one or more, or modifications, hybrids, we'll be happy to hear them and come back. Does that sound fair? Do you wanna take a break before this? I'm ready to go. Keep going if you're ready.
Yeah, let's go ahead. How long is this gonna take?
Ten minutes.
Three hours. You and Jessica are like, "Yeah, we'll take a break."
Ten minutes. Okay, so we've talked, this is in no particular order, but I'm going to just make quick mention of some of the things that I've, I've identified by looking at your charter, your rules and your procedures, and just our general knowledge of what, what have other communities had an opportunity to do. I've mentioned before that dismissal by the council is not an option, because you don't have the charter authority to do that. The charter identifies what the council can do, and those are actions that are not initiated by the council, but the council finds out that something has occurred, and then they take an action based on that. But actions that we've talked about in, through this investigation are not subject of that. Second is a public censure. And as I mentioned, a member of the city council swears an oath to support the laws and faithfully perform the duties of being a city council member. And you've heard the investigation, you've come to your own conclusions as to whether Counsel Topaz has lived up to that. But in the future, you could add to that oath, and it could be supplemented with some additional standards, or you could create your own standards of what a city council member's roles and responsibilities are. Within your codes, you say that there are responsibilities of decorum within council meetings. I don't find within that governing structure anything that refers to the responsibility of a council member in having good decorum, in interactions with city employees, interactions asking for documents, or taking time from employees, as opposed to making appointments and having some limitation. Some cities have identified rules and regulations on how much time a city council member can utilize of staff members making requests for research or documentation. You could create those types of things. Those are, that's all background to, you don't have a lot of that right now, but that does not limit you in the ability to make a statement about what you have perceived and heard are issues that cause you to want to make a statement about Counsel Topaz's actions. So what you could do is you could do a public censure. And that public censure could be any of the following or a combination. You can have the council write a letter that is directed to Counsel Topaz, putting him on notice of what your concerns are and what your expectations are for the future. You could write a resolution, which would be a public document adopted by the city council that goes into the public record, available for all to see, that states whatever you choose to put into it, drawing attention to things that you are not comfortable with, you feel are inappropriate, and you feel need to be stopped, and the consequences of what happens if not. You could place such a resolution, not only in the public record, you could put it on this city's website for a period of time, potentially a, a defined period, would be my suggestion, as opposed to leaving it there forever. Because in our society, people have the opportunity to hear what their misdeeds might be, and then have an opportunity to change their actions in the future. So certainly, there should be some time limitation. You could also issue a statement that's distributed within the city organization, and that statement could be a recognition of what your findings have been, and your support of following city regulations and policies, and your concern for the actions of an individual, and perhaps a statement of your expectations, that city employees feel comfortable making sure that such behavior by that council member or any other council member does not occur in the, in the future.
Or any staff, or any supervisors, or anything like that.
Exactly.
It's a great one, yes.
Exactly. So you could create a process where there's a safe place for people to raise these issues, and you already have that in your policies. But you might want to remind people that that applies to city council members, and here's the process to do it, and it's, again, that it's a safe place, no retaliation, because it has to be that, that element, no retaliation. You could also take some steps on restrictions of access. And we've heard that there've been some issues of Counsel Topaz coming into a work, an employee's workplace and dominating their time for a period of time, perhaps making requests that the council, the staff member may have felt were either inappropriate, or that they had to respond to because it was being made by a city council member. As you know, city employees know that you are all their ultimate bosses, the city administrator is their boss, but they don't have the opportunity to always go to the city administrator and say, "Can you step in and be the shield between this council member and me?" So you might want to reiterate some policies, you may even want to create a restriction for the counselor for a period of time, or some time, manner, and place restrictions on what places that he has a right to be. And as you've already stated earlier in the evening, he has the right, the voters have elected him to do his job. He has to be given the opportunity to, to participate in city council meetings, he has to have the opportunity to have access to public records and information to be able to do his job. But he doesn't have the ability to cross boundaries once you identify those boundaries. So we can do a better job of identifying what those boundaries are, and perhaps for a defined period of time, put additional restrictions on the counselor because of the allegations that have been substantiated. You can also modify your governing policy. So within your governing policy, there's section four that says that each counselor is assigned to one or more city departments. Well, perhaps you want to revisit that policy. That was adopted by resolution, you could change it by resolution. You could make a determination, for instance, that you wanna add some language that says that each council member is assigned one or more city departments if a council member has not been censured or reprimanded by the city council in the prior X number of months. So you might find that there's a performance standard that needs to be met, and based on some prior action, you again wanna get the attention of that council member. That would require a change of your own rules, but you could apply that, and I'm not suggesting you can apply it retroactively, but if there is an issue that you have substantiated today, you can play this out. You could also say that each council member should have an assignment unless have been sanctioned by the council for violating some specific activity or some specific policy. So the anti-harassment policy, or misuse of government functions, whatever. But some other statement could be made that might also restrict the council members in, by, by changing the governing policy, you would be potentially modifying what each of your, what your, your common goal, role is, which is to be involved in a collaborative process with the city manager, the city administrator, or a specific department. You may find that there is a specific department that you feel, you feel very comfortable that Counsel Topaz can participate in, you might make that assignment. You can do that under today's resolution. If you may feel that there are none that are appropriate at this point, and that's why I'm suggesting you could make that change. There is the process, and now I'm stepping out of what you have locally, but we mentioned before that there is the possibility that inaction could rise to being something that the Oregon Government Ethics Commission might want to look at. Anyone can raise that issue. Anyone can raise that issue. I'm not suggesting that the council do that. There's also a recall provision that the mayor already talked about, and that's under OAR 165-014-0005. There's a recall process that's established at the state level, and there's a recall manual that Secretary of State's office has, that anyone has access to online, they can look at that, and they can determine if they want to initiate that. The council does not have the ability to initiate a recall. That is something that is exclusively the right of an individual voter, who would choose to be the chief petitioner to raise some issue and then go out and gather signatures. The council's role would be, if someone went through the process and obtained sufficient number of signatures, then it would go on a ballot, but that's within the term of office of an individual. A recall does not prohibit someone from having the ability to run for office at a future date, but it is something that could be done. So I stated that there are some revisions that can be made to the, the governing policy. You can make some revisions also to your, your rules of conduct. You could have a more specific set of rules of conduct. Now, we're talking prospectively now, as opposed to any discipline, but as a result of this action, you might decide, we need to have a more clear list of the things you do and you don't do, and you may even create that, that list and say, we as a council are going to require that everyone sign it. I worked for a city that had a statement such as that, and every year, at the beginning of the year, all council members reviewed it, all five of them signed it, and we actually made it into a plaque that was on, on the wall with the signatures, so that you all can hold each other accountable for everyone being aware of the rules and responsibilities, and that their actions meet those. You can also create your own sanctions. So I'm telling you tonight, there aren't a lot of sanctions that are within your policies that apply to council members, but you can decide as a body to create some, show it of dismissal. Now, you could revise the charter by vote of the people. And as I mentioned, in 2010, you had a measure that was defeated by, by the voters, but there was a provision within that that's had a statement that may or may not apply here. This is an example, I'll read it to you, so you can see that you could construct language that you could put before the voters that they may consider. That language was talking about the role of the city manager, but then it said, because it was changing the position from city administrator to city manager. Then it said, no, no council member may directly or indirectly attempt to coerce the manager or a candidate for the office of manager in the appointment or removal of any city employee or in administrative decisions regarding city property or contracts. Violation of this prohibition is grounds for removal from office by a majority of the council after a public hearing. In council meetings, councils may discuss or suggest anything with the manager relating to city business. So that last statement was to say, by all means, talk to the city manager, do it within the context of the council meeting, so all five council members can decide whether that's direction that they want the council, the city manager to take. But that individual involvement, coercion, direction would be inappropriate. But the voters didn't pass that. That doesn't mean that you can't consider that again, again for the voter approval. And those are basically my, my thoughts as I, as I did some research for you tonight. As you know, we didn't talk about these in the prior meetings, because this is a step-by-step process for you to get to this point, to hear what those defined options are, and the limitations on those options. And now for you to either tonight or at a future time to tell us, what would you like us to assist you to do? So you can give direction to us, all the staff, or you could take your own action and create your own drafts to consider how you want to make whatever statements.
I'd certainly like to talk about it in our next meeting, possibly put it on our agenda, and collaboratively make the decision of what we want to, what we want to do.
Yeah, I liked all the things that Bill had to say. I liked the letter, the resolution, the city just releasing it to all city staff, kind of, you know, what's, what's going on. Basically, the governing policies, I thought was really good, and maybe even revisit, you know, what are, what have we required of one another, and what's okay and what's not okay, and then look at that a little more in depth, especially with this day and age. I mean, you know, I take it very seriously, you know, that we all are included, you know, the DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, you know, I definitely, that is, it's a different, we need to, we really need to look at it. So I liked all, all that, and some for the, you know, the recall, and I, you know, the charter may be something we look at or discuss, I don't know, you know, but I like those, those right there, for sure. Definitely some type of governing policy, because that's a little something to go on.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think those are probably longer, longer term, definitely we should put them as, as we, the modifying governing policy, the changes to rules, conduct, and those things definitely should have for longer term, but so the immediate ones would be the possible censure, the statement, the restrictions of access. Are we talking about, I mean, asking for guidance to consider as early as tomorrow?
We can talk about it tomorrow.
Yeah, we can start.
We can talk about it tomorrow if we wanted to. I would like to know a little bit more about what restrictions would look like, and I don't think they could get drawn up between now and tomorrow meeting.
Yeah. It's definitely something that you would want to have your staff involved in, because they understand the physical limitations of creating.
You have to allow a person to do their job.
Absolutely. So I guess, though, in terms of some immediacy, and so that, as Matt Brown was asking in his statement, and I imagine other employees are wondering, is that, what kind of, I mean, we will discuss this, but will it, would it prove us to make some kind of statement or declaration saying that we are fully committed to following through with these things that, and to ensure a, a safe workplace, and that other, you know, behaviors will not be tolerated, but give us some time to make the specific thing.
Yeah, I think that would probably be appropriate, is to, you know, maybe even talk about what will be on our agenda for tomorrow, but of course, it would be May 7th, I think it is, and May 5th? Okay, May 5th. May 5th meeting, and it's going to take, I'm sure, some time to do the executive, retract all the names out of that, right? So.
Yeah, that, that shouldn't take that long, but there, the executive summary has less of the specific names in it, so.
Yeah.
It's not going to be that difficult.
Okay. But, you know, and, and just that way we can have that maybe ready, and you can go to them, so we have it. You know, I want to receive at the same time that his counsel, if his counsel gets it, I want it equally, the same day, so I'm, I'm, for that day would just be easiest.
Yeah.
Because I think that's fair, all fairness aside, that is just the way, I mean, completely 100% fair, you know, so, because I personally would like to have a copy, in case I get confronted.
Yeah, we can probably commit to, we can probably commit to, to doing that by Friday or Monday at the latest.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable with making sure that that has been reviewed by Counselor Topaz before we move forward with this, and giving myself a chance to look over all of our options and look into them, because half of them, I have no idea what you said, so I'm going to have to do some research, so.
Hey, but could you just bring us, like, some ideas, and maybe direct you to, to work with staff just on a couple ideas, that maybe in general.
What I can do for tomorrow, of course, is I can take the notes I read from, and I can submit those to you all, so that you all see what I've, what I've come up with. And then the specifics, I'm leaving the specifics to you to give directions, because we follow your guidance for what your decisions.
Okay. Scott?
Yeah.
Would you like to make a comment?
Well, I was wondering if that redacted executive summary, when it's available to Mr. Topaz's counsel, would we, would I receive a copy of that?
Absolutely.
On the same day that, okay, so, okay, so that would be available to the newspaper.
That's the council's decision.
It's public record.
Oh, okay. I didn't know the logistics of that, so, thank you.
What I can say is that we did try to go other routes. We tried to allow to do this a little bit different way than it's going, is what it seems like. For anybody who's watching, they just need to know that we absolutely tried, and I just, before we adjourn, this is a long night, is there anything else, counsel, that we need to discuss that you, that you need me to keep this meeting going any longer? No?
Nothing from my perspective.
Okay, so, and moving forward, I just, again, like to personally, for this entire council, apologize to Matt Brown for what, what happened tonight as well.
And others.
And, and, and the others, yes, but, but Matt's, and again, I apologize, and we definitely want everybody to feel safe and comfortable, and we appreciate all the work that our city staff, and boards and commissions, because they're all part of us, too. So with that, we are adjourned.